...of January 23, 2019, please stand for political allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. President, roll call, please. Councilman Stridie?
President.
Councilman Livingston?
President.
Councilman McRons?
President.
Councilman Taylor?
President.
Councilman Patrick?
President.
Councilman Montz?
President.
And President Skam?
President.
That's all seven members here. Approve the minutes from January 10th, 2019, Councilman Patrick. Councilman Stridie?
Mr. President, I propose to approve the January 9th, 2019 business meeting and January 10th, 2019 special business meeting minutes.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. President, read the public hearing notice, please.
City Council setting a public hearing. The mayor and city mayor and mayor of Binghamton will hold a public hearing regarding the 2019 bond ordinance on February 6, 2019, at the regularly scheduled city council business meetings here in the city council chambers.
Thank you. Now time for public comments. Anyone wishing to speak, please come down.
Close up. Bear with me, my eyes are not as good as they used to be. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Michael Vasquez, a homeowner and business owner in Binghamton. And to the members of city council and the public watching on video, I want to thank you for hearing from me today. I want to speak about something that I heard when I attended the January 9th city council meeting. It was in that meeting that I heard the goal of transparency being used in ways that are both not transparent and ethically challenged. First, I am aware of the efforts of most of city council to expand the transparency of government and access to the public for some time now. I understand that to accomplish this goal properly in a non-partisan manner to the benefit of the public requires planning and oversight. For this, I commend the city council. But that was not the case on January 9th. It was revealed that at least one meeting was secretly recorded, obviously an ethical dilemma and subverting the goal of transparency. It also eroded any trust the public can have about efforts of transparency being claimed by some. Case in point, we cannot allow a single individual to have sole access to recordings containing unknown video to be edited and disseminated to the public at the discretion of only one individual. How can we know exactly what is being recorded? How do we know who has access to any raw video? How can the public be assured that any raw video or audio won't be used in a partisan manner and at the detriment of the public? Where is the oversight? Unless I am mistaken, and I am no lawyer, the video that was released under dubious circumstances of the January 7th meeting contains material that could be considered private, which means there is a legal liability. Does that fall on the lone city councilman? Could the city of Binghamton be sued? Who approved this? To my knowledge, no one. Let me ask, as the process continues at this very moment, who has control of the camera? Who do I know? How do I know? The public will hear what is being said every time, at every minute. When will the recordings be made public at the discretion, desire, and free time of a lone councilman? Again, I ask, who has access to the raw video? Who has access and control of the YouTube channel that has thus far distributed video to the public? A channel that denies transparency, as it does not name who owns it nor who has control? A channel that by its title is focused on city council, but in its actions has displayed a tendency for both partisanship and promotion of a lone city council member, which is a disservice to all members and the hard work that they do. Let me ask, who is responsible for distributing copies of public meetings to the public if they say they do not have access to the internet or want a different format? Who will cover the cost of that distribution? Who has legal liability? What happens if this YouTube page, under dubious control, seeks to monetize what should be free to the public? Does anyone know if that has already been done? What safeguard guarantees that it won't be done in the future? The word of any one council member is not enough, especially if that word is questionable, as ethical challenges created with the best of intentions, no doubt, have violated New York Public Office Law Code of Ethics, Section 74.3H. I know this must be embarrassing, but better than a lawsuit against an individual or the city and thus taxpayers just to save the red face of a politician or a party. We must view this in a larger and absolutely clear picture that assures every member of the public transparency. In doing that, we also promote the trust of elected officials that... I'm sorry?
One minute.
Just about that. In doing that, we also promote the trust of elected officials that they are not being used, entrapped, or violated even by accident. Thus, they will be able to act in the best interests of the public without unnecessary partisan chest beating for votes in the next election. Let me suggest this, there needs to be a committee that is created on transparency. That committee, under advisement of legal counsel, should take possession of all raw video immediately. Any YouTube webpage or other social media not created by the committee needs to be expunged and replaced with authorized pages to instill confidence in the public of bipartisanship and firm lawful control. A structure for receiving requests for non-internet-based copies of meetings must be determined, including the cost of such copies and process. This can be then noted. I had slightly more, but I do thank you for the time today.
Okay, now we're back to our preferred agenda. Interdiction Resolution 1904, Considered Finance, Councilman Patrick.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to ask for unanimous approval of introductory order to the Resolution 19 that you reported. Second, is the resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into agreement with unhealed CPA providing services? This is the service of the city of... audit services for the city of Binghamton, Binghamton Local Development Corporation, BOBC, Binghamton Urban Renewal Agency, known as URO, Civil Audit of the Community Development Library, known as CPG Company. And the cost for auditing for three years is $58,700.
Thank you. Questions or comments?
Call and question.
Questions for call? All states have precedent?
Yes, Councilman.
I'm sorry, did we just read the auditing services resolution or the resolution related to our charge?
1904. So...
I thought that sounded like the language from the auditing services.
It's 1903.
So there's a chance your package is out of order.
Resolution 1904, title of that is Resolution Authorizing Mayor to Enter into Agreement but Not Used to Create for Auditing Services. It's just the last piece of legislation packed.
Also, Mr. President, please.
You don't have a legitimate package. It's the first thing.
Yeah, no, I just thought he read the outline of the auditing services package or the auditing services resolution. I thought that the first piece of preferred business was about the Delvede and Wood for our charge.
This was the first piece of the Resolution 19.
Did I miss anything?
So, well, this isn't on the preferred agenda.
Correct.
Correct. There's a chance that your package might be out of order. Can I apologize for that if that's the situation?
Yeah, you are not crazy. The agenda says introductory resolution 1904 under preferred, which includes contract entry to Hawkins. However, the Resolution 1904 is in fact CPA agreement, which is what Chris Crawford read it.
Thank you.
Yep. No, you're not crazy.
So, the first item on the preferred agenda is introductory Resolution 19-03, Considered Finance. That is not correct on the agenda. The agenda says introductory Resolution 19-04, Considered in CPA Committee. That's not correct. And the first, the only item on the preferred agenda is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into agreement with Hawkins Delvede and Wood for our charge rebate and yield restriction of finance services.
Questions for call?
Call.
Mr. President?
Go ahead, please.
This agenda is stapled out of order and it's also mislabeled. The first of the five resolutions that we are looking at saying, the first item on the preferred agenda, which is Resolution R19-03, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor to Enter into a Contract with Hawkins Delvede and Wood. I would respectfully request that the preferred agenda will be followed, asking if any council member would like to pull anything from it and then that the clerk be it and a motion be made to accept all Resolution 19 preferred agenda.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Would anyone like anything? Would anyone like to start off with a poll for the preferred agenda? Please, none?
So the only item on the preferred agenda should read introductory Resolution 19-03, Considered Finance. And just as a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Hawkins Delvede and Wood for our charge rebate and yield restriction of finance services.
Thank you, Mr. President. Questions for comments?
Mr. President? Yes, I'm trying. I'm not sure which resolution we are reading this current motion for right now.
He owed you a motion, really didn't make the motion. He made a comment and appealed to the president to go back to the agenda, the order that it stands that we can address the preferred agenda first. I will note for record and for purposes of the clerk that there is currently a motion and a second and a role called pending on 1904. Essentially, what Councilman Stridie has done is ask council to go out of the order of the proceeding you have just followed back into the order of the preferred agenda with a note of the typo that it should read 1903. Therefore, I believe what Councilman Stridie is asking is to move forward with the preferred agenda 1903, to go back to regular order of business, which is first question, if anybody wants to remove 1903 from the preferred agenda. Anybody? We can go back to it.
And also too, it says, you've got through Resolution 1905, which technically 1904. That's correct. So you might want to mark that out. There's a councilman, Livingston. That is, yeah, that's where I was going to. What is 1905?
But you're not wrong. It is for a new motion and a second and a role called pending on actual resolution.
We can do a roll call on that, Mr. President.
Well, it would be a roll call on the preferred agenda.
Okay. Yes. I'd like to have a roll call on the preferred agenda, please, Mr. President.
Chair, should we give a motion?
Yep.
Motion to accept all pieces of legislation on the preferred agenda. And also, roll call, Mr. President.
Councilman Stridie?
Aye.
Councilman Livingston?
Stand.
Councilman McRons?
Aye.
Councilman Taylor?
Aye.
Councilman Patrick?
Aye.
Councilman Montz?
Aye.
And President Skam?
Aye.
That's six ayes, one extension, Livingston.
Mr. President?
Yes, Councilor.
It's the rule of the chamber that a motion must be made on the behalf of a member in order for someone to be abstained with a reason listed. I'd ask Councilman Livingston, why be abstained?
Councilman Livingston, can I ask why you're abstaining from this vote?
I'm not exactly sure. I wish I could tell exactly what order he was having, and I think I'm still slightly unclear based on, you know, we're moving a little quickly here and the big board is out of order, so abstaining is not exactly sure.
Okay. Last on the map, preferred agenda. Introductory orders 1912, Considered Finance, Councilman Patrick. This will be... It's pretty tight now, so.
I'd like to ask unanimous approval for Resolution 19-04, a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into agreement with unhealed CPA providing services.
Chris?
Chris.
I'm sorry, the next one on our... Should be on the agenda is...
19-12.
19-12.
It's on the very first page.
Okay. Maybe we'll be fine on this.
Mr. President, I'd like to ask for unanimous approval of orders 19-12.
Second.
And this is an ordinance to amend the 2018 Euro Police Budget to Increase Shift Differential Funding. The police chief in control of the city of Binghamton found the proper necessary to amend the 2018 Euro Police Budget to Increase Shift Differential Funding, and where such budget amendment was approved by the Board of Estu... and Portman on January 16, 2019. Now therefore, the council of city of Binghamton, doing a meeting in regular session, does hereby, in any spous, that the controller and city treasurer of the city of Binghamton are hereby authorized and directed to amend the 2018 Police Department Budget to Increase Shift Differential Funding, and as a transfer from it within an internal police budget and decrease one line from $3,000 and increase line for shift differential to $3,000.
Questions for comments?
Call and question, Mr. President.
Questions for call? Roll call?
Councilman Stridie?
Aye.
Councilman Livingston?
Aye.
Councilman McRons?
Aye.
Councilman Taylor?
Aye.
Councilman Patrick?
Aye.
Councilman Montz?
Aye.
And President Skam?
Aye.
That's seven ayes, zero nays.
Thank you. As the introductory orders 1913-13, Considered Finance, Councilman Patrick, also, do you have to read the title of the order first? Move back to the...
19-19?
19-13, please, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like unanimous approval of introductory orders 19-13.
Second.
And this is an ordinance amending the 2019 Finance Budget to Provide a Responsibility Adjustment to Compensate for Training of the City Treasurer.
Thank you, Councilman. Questions for comments on this? Roll call, please.
Call and question.
Questions for call? Roll call, Mr. President.
Councilman Stridie?
Aye.
Councilman Livingston?
Aye.
Councilman McRons?
Aye.
Councilman Taylor?
Aye.
Councilman Patrick?
Aye.
Councilman Montz?
Aye.
And President Skam?
Aye.
That's seven ayes, zero nays.
As the introductory orders 19-04, Considered Finance, Councilman Patrick. Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to ask for unanimous approval of orders 19-14.
Second.
And this is an ordinance to amend the 2018 Refuge Resposal Budget to Increase the Retirement Fund, and as a matter of $359 increase from one and increase another budget line of $359.
Thank you, Councilman. Questions for comments?
Call and question.
Questions for call? Roll call, please.
Councilman Stridie?
Aye.
Councilman Livingston?
Aye.
Councilman McRons?
Aye.
Councilman Taylor?
Aye.
Councilman Patrick?
Aye.
Councilman Montz?
Aye.
And President Skam?
Aye.
As the introductory orders 19-04, Considered Finance, Councilman Patrick.
Prior to you reading that again, currently, that motion has been seconded twice. So at the point of order, there was no need to read through it. With that said, the council would like to essentially withdraw the existing motions and start the process over again. That's okay with me, but there are two motions pending on the floor for this proposal.
This is for 1904?
Correct.
This is the... Right.
And I would instruct the clerk to take the first motion by Chris Patrick, which was then seconded by Councilman Taylor as opposed to the subsequent ones, and the subsequent ones preceded by the prior. Okay?
So we can do a roll call?
Actually, could I leave a comment on that, Mr. Chair, later? Yep. I was just thinking about it, and I do think that I want to say, I do think based on our conversation about this RL yesterday, so for the past over five years, I'm not sure of the exact number, we've had an accounting firm that has audited the city's finances for a long time. They've done a great job. I certainly have been happy with their audits, and of course, I trust the Controller's Office and their happiness with the audits as well. But, so I have some questions about why are we changing the firm that we're going in with if we're happy with the result that we're getting, if they're doing diligent work and paying the price for the sake of transparency? This firm that we're going with actually costs about $10,000 more, and I was close to not supporting this, but the reason that I'm going to be supporting this tonight is because the argument was made from the Controller's Office that it is good practice to change the firms with which you, you know, work with in terms of auditing the city's finances. A fresh set of eyes is good, as well as a different perspective on the future and past of the city's finances. So just for the sake of constantly saving this money in the long run and also for the sake of best practices of government accountability, I will be supporting this tonight. But for any residents that may be wondering about a new firm that we're working with, that is the reason. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Taylor. Any other questions for comments?
Call and question.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Yeah, I'll just add that both in the private sector as well as in the public sector, we know with CPA firms or accounting firms right here in the US, there are what we refer to as GAAP or Generally Accepted Accounting Principles that must be followed when financial statements are what we informally refer to as rect or reconciled. So for those who are watching, it is standard practice every now and then to ensure that you have a new set of eyes, and while that may substantively bring a new perspective, obviously the laws are not changing unless applicable federal, state, and local laws with regard to financial budgets. But again, this is a normal standard practice, both in the private and the public sector.
Thank you, Councilman. Any questions for comments?
Call and question, Mr. President.
Questions for call? Roll call, please.
Councilman Stridie?
Aye.
Councilman Livingston?
Aye.
Councilman McRons?
Aye.
Councilman Taylor?
Aye.
Councilman Patrick?
Aye.
Councilman Montz?
Aye.
And President Skam?
Aye.
That's seven ayes, zero nays.
Now I have a communication from council members, and we'll start with Councilman Livingston.
Thank you, Mr. President. So I'd like to give a brief recap of the planning commission public hearing as it was exceptional, or around 75 people showed up, and whenever that happens, it's important for as many people to know about it as possible. So, and if this really relates directly to work that's standing for the city council in the coming months, related to the overall zoning laws. So at the meeting, folks were overwhelmingly against the redevelopment of the decker mansion. Actually, the core of the meeting, if you want to watch it, if you're interested in hearing everything that folks had to say, some people were extremely eloquent, other people not, but you know this is how public hearings go. The planning commission emphasized that the decisions that they make are largely prescribed in the code, and the chair pointed to this one, to the city council, and the zoning code overhaul underway as the best vehicle to address any issues that president's brought up for the public hearing. I would also add that without investment in staff and code enforcement, increased investment in staff and code enforcement, and as long as code enforcement posture is primarily reactive and not proactive, then reforming the city zoning codes alone won't likely address a lot of the concerns that were brought up during that public hearing. I also wanted to let folks know about something that I heard about happen on Friday at East Middle School. I'm not sure if you all are aware, but apparently four young girls were strip searched in the school. And this was done under the much needed guidance of the principal and vice principal by the school nurses. I had no idea that there was a policy that allowed strip searching of children in our public schools, but I wanted everybody to know about this and to give you an opportunity to reach out to the principal, reach out to the school board, and learn more about it. That was also a meeting, the school board meeting last night was also a meeting that was exceptional, people that turned out, 200 people from one area turned out to the school board meeting. So whenever the public shows up in those kinds of numbers, I think it helps us to listen to what folks have to say, and especially for the president of your district, like to reach out to the principal and learn more about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Livingston. And the councilman McRons?
My thank you, old president. So we have all, just was at the planning committee meeting right before we came here. It was very awesome. It's about the regulations that we put forward to the planning commission for zoning, and this would in essence stop the more atrocities that we have of like decker building trying to go and input student housing in the residential area. It has legal boundaries that are well written, called out, which makes our communities and residents safer, and it gives us a better legal ramifications that we can go through and forward, be more proactive. I know that we will be putting this on online for 30 days for public review, which I'm really excited about. I can't wait to hear the comments. I can't wait to share it as well, because I've been working on this for three years. So once the planning commission steps back, they'll add anything that they feel like might need to be added, and then it'll come back to us where we can then vote it in. And I look forward to the day, like I say, I've worked with Binghamton University, the vice president's office, I've worked with the OCC, I've worked with our residents, I have worked with like every department, especially legal, which I put it through our head corporate council, which nobody ever seems to get to, so that has been for a long time. I call it a dream, I should know. But at least you let this dream go. So, on February 5th, there's a housing task force meeting from 5:00 to 7:00, and I'll repeat that again. This is the housing task force, that's off of the Room County, the Room County Landlord Association. I'm proud that we are part of this task force, and it's going to be a public forum, so I would love to see everybody come down there and see what you want in your neighborhood and see what... Just have a voice, have a voice in your community. Would that have a good feeling?
Thank you, Councilman. And the councilman Taylor, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll start by reminding folks, if you haven't heard already, that for a number of blood titres, there is a critical blood shortage. of blood types, there is a critical blood shortage. Um, I'll be giving blood on Monday and I encourage all, uh, civil servants and all residents of the city to, if, if you're eligible to and if it's possible, to take, you know, some time to do, to do the same. Um, you know, the Red Cross says that, uh, every time you give blood, you're possibly saving up to three lives. So it's just one of those things where if you, if you can muster it, if you're not afraid of the needle or whatever it is, um, just make the time to go and do it. It's an easy thing to do and it's painless. Um, I joined, uh, the county executive and Councilman Livingston as well as the Transit Commissioner. This week, uh, we announced the, um, revolutionary new bus app that residents can use to track their bus, uh, their Brum County Transit Bus regardless of where it is in the county. Um, this is, this hits close to home for me as the councilman for the fourth district. Uh, a lot of constituents with no cars that rely on the bus system to get around the county to pick up their kids, to go grocery shopping, to get to work, and especially when it's cold and raining and snowy out, you know, the extra five to 10 minutes that you can save by looking at the route on your phone, by seeing where the bus is exactly, it's a big deal. And it certainly, um, is an important way of modernizing the transit system that we have here in our community. Certainly fits, in my vision, to create a more transit-friendly, walkable, likable community here in the city itself. There's still some kinks being worked out with the app, uh, but, you know, overall it's a really good thing and I'm excited to hear about it. If you are interested, go to the App Store on your Android or iPhone device and just search Double Map, select Brum County, and, uh, you'll get the Where's My Bus app. Uh, lastly, I, uh, would just like to, um, thank Councilman Livingston for, uh, all the recordings and, um, uh, sort of, um, tapes that are being put onto YouTube of all the meetings and committee meetings of council, the, um, planning commission, uh, that are being put onto YouTube for free. Uh, I'm oftentimes, especially, you know, during the day, I come out of work. So even as a councilman, not just as a citizen of the city, it's nice for me to be able to, uh, go and check on what's happening in the city of Vinghamton. And I think it's a, a great way of just trying to engage constituents more and educate constituents more on what's happening here in City Hall. And I look forward to hopefully, uh, making it a more official, more, more official process, uh, where folks can just head to the city Vinghamton website, um, and, uh, you know, click on a YouTube link and see what happened in their latest city council meeting or what happened in their latest planning commission meeting or anything like that, things cities do all around the United States. And I think it's, um, a great thing for us as a council to move forward. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilman. Other councilman, Patschler.
Thank you, Mr. President. Quick comment, I thought we had a significant snowstorm this past weekend, and I want to thank you, thank the, uh, Public Works Department Administration for, uh, I think doing a, a very good job overall. Uh, I'm sure there were some people that may have complained, uh, it wasn't perfect, but I think with the amount of sun that we, we receive, um, it did an excellent job. I want to thank the, uh, Parks Department, the Public Works, the game administration. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Other councilman, Montzo?
Well, I'm gonna have to, uh, reiterate on Councilman Patschler's, uh, I got actually phone calls thanking the DPW, the people who were very pleased with their way, the plow took care of it. The mayor told everybody, if you're in the way, you will be towed, and cars will tow you, or you will be taken. And it will happen even the next time. And, you know, pay attention, there are other parking lots to park, you can park in a white's parking lot, parking, public parking lot, I've got parking lots if you need to. You're welcome to park in those, they're a big snowstorm. Uh, so please be aware, be courteous to the DPW while they're out there plowing. It's not easy to put one of these plows through, move your vehicles off the road or park outside of the street you're supposed to be parked in. Would that, if anything?
Thank you, Councilman. Other councilman, Stridie?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I want to thank all the, uh, first district residents who, uh, came out to the, uh, neighborhood watch meeting at St. Mike's over on Clinton Street. We had a great meeting, a lot of people showed up, uh, again, Thursday, every month, um, at St. Mike's two ninety-six Clinton Street. I also want to thank all the residents on Junction Ave and Lorraine Ave for your incredible patience, uh, for the last few years as, um, an issue related to a property has been working its way through the court system. I also want to thank corporate and council, uh, Ken, Brian, Sharon, uh, and Mark and Stephanie and everyone in the office for all the work that they have incredibly done. Uh, we finally saw a very powerful victory. We've got some really big change coming, uh, in that part of the ward very soon. So I want to thank all that for, uh, when I'm sure we're a lot of random briefs and many sleepless hours. Um, I do want to congratulate Polar Vegan, uh, they normally actually attend the farmer's market, uh, every Saturday, and we are very, very excited. This is another great example of the turnaround that we have seen in first district, and more specifically in first ward over the last few years. We've got a great food restaurant coming down eighteen-one Clinton Street, so we're really, really excited. Um, local, uh, and, uh, if you haven't had their stuff, they're really, really good. So you should definitely check them out as we're getting closer. Uh, they also have a, um, a project on Kickstarter. Please feel free to check that out and support them. They're doing a great job. And, uh, I really want to thank the DPW and the Parks Department. Uh, they really did an incredible job, uh, getting all the snow plowed. I've actually heard incredibly positive, positive things. I also want to thank City Hall, the mayor's office for really pushing as well as city council, um, to reiterate it to people to please not park on the road. I feel like this is one of the first major times that in a very large macro sense, I've seen that more heated, uh, and I know I've spoken to a number of, uh, snow plow drivers and I know the, uh, positive impact that made. So I really appreciate, um, all of our residents and our homeowners' efforts of doing that. And lastly, uh, I want to welcome back all of our students from Vinghamton University, uh, SUNY Brum and Davis College, um, stay warm, good semester, and, uh, thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman. Uh, briefly, I just wanted to say that I want to reiterate what the council people thought about the snow pool. I thought they did a great job, uh, drove to, drove around on Sunday at eleven o'clock in the morning and the roads were virtually clear. Rock salt works best at ten degrees or above, but when it gets below ten degrees, rock salt doesn't work. And that's probably what happened on Monday, Sunday and Monday when the snow got blowing around. So, but I thought they did a good job overall and Parks Department did a great job, they bridges the sidewalk, so that's it. I want to take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.